Please mute your phone. Would you please mute your phone? We can hear a TV and a phone conversation going. Councilman Harville, will you give us an invocation, please?
Okay, he'll need to unmute.
All right, Ms. Allison, this is Councilman Harville.
Would you give us an invocation, please?
I will, thank you very much. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for today. Thank you for direction. Thank you for the opportunity to gather together and to represent our city. I pray that the things that we do and say would be pleasing to you. I pray that you would give us discernment and wisdom as we discuss the city's finances in Jesus' name. Amen. Do you like for me to lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir, Councilman. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it all over to you, please.
Okay, thank you. All right. If you would recite the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll call us to order. Does it look like we have everybody here, Ms. Allison? I'm sorry, I'm in the process of trying to log into my computer and get on.
Yeah, we have we have Councilman Jimison, Councilwoman Thomas, Carmichael, Ms. Jane Thomas as well. We have Mayor Perkins that's here. A lot of the partners. Yes, we got everyone here except. Let me see. Councilman Johnson, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
So far, I see everyone. Councilman Harville, Councilman Randolph, and I'll try to I'll try to call him in.
Okay, thank you. Is the agenda, is it first, is the budget the first on the agenda? And I apologize for not having it in front of me.
Review information from your January thirteenth committee meeting.
Perfect, okay. Yeah, I'd like to get that out of the way. I thought I'd just leave a time to see if there were any follow-up questions or comments after our call with BMSS on Thursday of last week. If not, I have a couple of comments. But anybody have any questions, any follow-up questions or or anything? I would open the floor to listening. You may have to unmute yourself if if you want to ask.
I'm hoping that Councilman, you want to call in and you want me to just?
All right, I don't hear any. I would like to, and not not being politically savvy, as I have expressed numerous times in the past, I would like I would like the authority to go ahead and engage BMSS under the and I guess maybe I should ask, I guess it would be prudent to ask Attorney Madison if he would. I guess we would need a scope of work. A scope of work from them first. I mean, I know what their scope of work is. It's to, you know, to clear up the deficiencies that were noted by you know, the audit firm so that so that we can become auditable. I know as far as a, you know, what it's going to cost us. I mean, I think that's impossible to determine at this time. I will add that, you know, this will be a bill-as-you-go process. So we will receive progress billing throughout this process. And it'll be, it'll simply be, you know, they'll they'll bill us by the hour for their staff that is working on it. Attorney Madison, do you have any? She had any insight on what we might need to do there?
When you mentioned, good evening, everyone. Councilman Harville, Mayor Perkins, and everyone participating in this call. When you mentioned BMSS, I was not present at the January thirteenth meeting. Are you talking about an accounting or auditing firm to guide the city through what happened with the Office of Public Examiners report of March twenty of twenty twenty?
That's correct. And BMSS is a CPA firm that also does advisory work. And this would not be in a capacity of an audit. This would be a consulting agreement. And the scope of work for that consulting agreement would be to bring us, you know, to clear up the deficiencies that have been.
The scope of work is always determined by the employing agency, which in this case is the City of Selma. So what you would do is out of your, what I suggest you do, out of your committee, come to an agreement on what the core issues are with either the audits, the Office of Public Examiners report, or any recent audit we've had, or a combination of all of those. But you can add a list of tasks to be accomplished, metrics, if you will, for anyone to do anytime in any contract. That's called a scope of work. Whatever you or the council decides to ask the agency or the entity, in this case, the accounting firm, to do, as long as it's not illegal, immoral, or unethical, they're obligated to do it, especially if they put ink to pen and paper. You could also, I would believe, look forward to soliciting the input from the mayor as to any concerns he has either based on the Office of Public Examiners auditing or the budget issues or accounting issues or audit issues. I've got one or two points that I would like to make later on, but it involves what happened as a result of the last audit, not a management representation that are not being signed. And I think some
Somebody must be unmuted. We're getting some feedback.
Yeah, and again, the financial responsibility, the the finances are the particular responsibility of the council by statute. But the key, I would think, is communication and cooperation with the executive branch in terms of any concerns they have. Then the council would add, would take from your committee what suggestions or comments or directions you would like to see the council vote upon as a scope of work.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, and I'm going to ask the mayor if he would share a couple of thoughts with us here. I want to make one statement also in, I guess, in support of BMSS and in light of, you know, the situation with the state and with you know, there are our threats of legal action from involved parties as well. And I will say that BMSS has been involved from a consulting standpoint. However, they are not legal experts, and that would be, you know, outside the realm of their expertise. But they do and have worked hand in hand with legal representation on these types of matters. So that's just, that's just food for thought there if we come to that. If there's no, if there's no other questions from the council, Mr. Mayor, would you share some thoughts with us, please?
Councilman, good evening, everyone. Yes, we can. If the council concurs with BMSS as taking the lead on this initiative, then I can work with you, Councilman, to to give them what they need to put together a proposal. And the proposal will include an engagement letter that would be, once the proposal, once the proposal reviewed by council, and it says what you wanted to say, then the next step would simply be to approve the proposal and approve the engagement letter. Once the engagement letter is approved, they would sign it, I would sign it, and they'd go to work. So we could, if the council agrees with BMSS being the being the entity of choice, Councilman, we can work through the language and bring it back to the council for consideration and then move forward.
Very good. Would you have any reservation? I know you, I believe you were able to sit in on the meeting. Do you have any reservations with BMSS or any follow-up?
No, BMSS is a highly qualified, very credentialed organization. They are fine. I don't have a problem with them at all. Being the entity of choice, that's the one you brought to the table. I've done, I've vetted, and I know that they are credentialed and very capable of doing what needs to be done. And, you know, they would, once, once when we put together, you know, the bullet items or a letter, if you were requesting them to submit a proposal for the engagement, once we put that together and they respond, they would then say what their level of effort, what, you know, what skill sets they would need to bring to the process. They could, based on the things we give them, they can come back. We can even negotiate terms and conditions of their response. But once all of that's done, we can go ahead and do the engagement letter. But no, I'm fine with, I'm fine with BMSS, and I'd be fine with whatever decision the council makes in that regard.
Super, thank you. Is this something that in committee that we need to vote on, or what's procedural here?
Precisely, Councilman, you would, I think the attorney probably should answer that instead of me, but this is a decision. I don't know that you can vote on it in the committee, even though the committee is a full body of the council. I don't think you can vote on it in the committee. I think you had to bring this back to the council in a full council meeting for a vote.
And I would chime in and agree with that as city attorney. The committee's actions are limited to consideration, deliberation, and reporting out to the council for, with its recommendation on council action, the council has to act quorum present, a majority of the quorum voting in favor.
Very good, okay. Well, I'll open it, I'll open the floor one more time for any questions or comments or even opposition to this. If not, then I'll bring it to the council's attention. I'll have it on the agenda for our next meeting and bring it up as a recommendation coming out of committee. Anybody else have any comments or questions or reservations? All right, very good. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the budget. And again, having not proceeded over one of these in the past, nor sat in on one.
Could I, this Councilman Randolph, could I ask a question before we go to move on?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the company that we're trying to get, but you know, I'm having a problem with it having been more than one company that we went through, you know, tried to go through, you know. Because we never, as since I've been on council, we never just pick one company, and we don't know how much we want to pay. It might be seventy thousand, might be a hundred thousand. Are we violating any kind of bid laws? That's my question, bid laws.
According.
Could somebody else do that for me?
Yes. According to the bid law, if we was going to do this, it should have, we should have had more than one. We should have had more than one proposal brought to the body of the council if we're making this decision. But this Councilman Carmichael, Councilman, he led this committee with this one company. So I think that if, he should have had, according to the bid law, we should have had at least more than, at least two more.
I will, I will say this. I'm sorry, I can't talk very well because I'm missing some teeth. This is Councilman Carmichael. I believe specialty things such as this and engineering and things like that, you don't have to get bids on if it's a special. And that's why, the same reason that the mayor can hire an auditor without a bid, is because CPA is a specialty deal. But I'm not positive on that, but I think I remember reading that.
Professional services are exempt from bid law.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Good question, though. Thank you very much, Councilman Randolph. I appreciate that. Okay, to move on to the budget items, could I yield the floor to you, Mr. Mayor, or just kind of help me along here?
Yeah, I can do that. Maybe you want to share the control with me, and I'll bring up a copy of the budget, and we can just start walking through it. Now, you actually disabled it. Try it again. Click it back, and you probably, I was probably already sharing, looks like. Just if you go to my name.
Withdraw co-host permission.
Hold on a second. Don't withdraw it. Hold on a second, let me see. Can you see that?
It's starting to share. Yes, sir, we can see it.
Very good, very good. This is, the budget that you have received, council members, there are three primary sections. One is the revenue section. And can you see that?
Yes, sir.
And with the revenue section of the budget, the interim finance director, Ms. Oliver, assistant, was putting this together. If you have any questions about this, she and I are available to respond to any questions that you have. The projected revenue is currently at nineteen million eight hundred six thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents. That's projected for this. This is the, this column right here represents the budget that you're currently operating from. And you're currently operating from a budget that says seventeen point nine. And we're proposing nineteen point eight. If you want to know the difference between that, most certainly share it with you. It's primarily in this number right here. If you look at that item, the reimbursement from FEMA, that is monies that we will be spending this year. And this is the percentage of that money that we will be recovering from that expenditure. So it bumped those numbers up to about one point two million dollars above what we would have seen otherwise. Also, this budget does not include the rental of any of our spaces, performing arts center, convention center, and all that. All of those monies have been taken out of this budget. And so we think this is a very realistic budget at nineteen point eight. Council, have any questions?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Councilwoman Thomas. The question I ask you, could you explain to me how did you come up with the the two million? I know you said that we're gonna receive from the FEMA, which would be like seventy-five, seventy-five percent of what we put up to do, to clean up the disaster from the cleanup. We will receive seventy-five percent of that back?
It's actually about eighty-seven and a half percent. But yeah, you're close. What you do if you come over to the general budget section, and you will, if we go down to, let me do it this way. If you go down to the grant match section of this, we've actually worked with the engineers. And what we are, where we are right now, we are projecting that the total cost of what we have done is going to run us about one point four million. That does not include what the city did with our crews directly. This is the portion that we have actually contracted out. So we're thinking it's going to be around, we're going to land around one point four million. This is the last, and I don't know if hog a stone on the, on the call, because I don't, I don't, I don't recall asking that we bring them in. But that's what we're talking about. So you're looking at about eighty-seven and a half percent of that being reimbursed, and that's where that number comes from, Councilman. So if you, if you go back and you look at that number again, you'll see, you'll see it's about one. You'll see it's about eighty-seven and a half percent.
Okay. Can you tell me would you included the salaries where the wages increase that you have in this two-point-some million dollar add-on?
Say it again.
Was this included with the wages of the salary increase that you added into the two-point-some million dollars?
Yes.
That you would have to be paying out for the salaries of, you know, increasing the wages of the employees?
Yes, if you go to the third section, which is says proposed employees twenty twenty-one, in that section, you have, well, let's just stop here, planning and development as an example. Well, let's go to a larger one, let's see. So you can get a good picture here. Buildings. If you go to stop at public works, this is a good example.
Okay.
When you get in public works as an example, you see we're making seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. I'm proposing their salary get bumped up to nine dollars. When you do that, when you, that, that, that is actually included in this budget. Not only do we include the salaries, we're actually including their medical benefits based on the actual cost of the benefit. We include the cost of the life insurance, retirement, Medicaid, Social Security. All of those costs are included in the budget. And it actually tallies up here. We actually have in the, in the public works department budget, thirty thousand dollars of overtime, the benefits for that added up, when you accumulate those, it's two hundred and sixty-four million. Public works budget for payroll would be one point one million sixty-nine thousand nine sixty-four. That number, this is what you see. When you see this number right here, that number, when you go into the public works budget over in the, in the general budget section.
Yes.
Let me go down to it here real quickly. I'm letting people in while we, while people are asking to come in. So when you go, when you go over here, let's just look at this a moment. You see in the payroll section, you see this is the total wages, seven hundred and seventy-five, eight sixty-three. You'll find that number right there, okay? So that's where you're going to see that in that section. When you add the FICA, the employee health insurance, retirement, and these insurances, when you add all of these additional benefits, you're going to come up with this number.
Okay.
All right.
My next question is to you. Normally, the budget is normally based on the intaking of the fiscal year of when we get the profit tax, license tax of the whole entire money taken in. Did you base on the figure of the year of what we are bringing in, based on to run the city off?
Yes, ma'am. If you look at, if you look at column E in the revenue budget, you will see what the actual revenue was for the prior year in nineteen twenty, based on what we have in our financial records. This is the number that you had included in the budget that you are looking at now. If you compare these, you will find that these numbers that we have here are more in line with what we actually perform.
Okay. And does this means that with what you calculated, of what we plan to get in from Zeter and also what the fiscal year of what we bring in and total, so really, I'm asking, my question is asking you this. There were, we know that it had always been a seventeen-point-some million dollar budget that we ran off this for prior to the years. But now your fiscal year that you're coming in, you're increasing a two-point million in some, in this budget. So is this, is this not going to affect where we don't have to discuss about being any tax increase and anything like that, that we are going to be able to actually run this budget off of nineteen million?
I am not proposing a tax increase, if that's what you're asking, Councilman.
Yes, and this is, yes, that's my question.
I am not proposing a tax increase.
Okay. That is what I really wanted to know. And I just wanted to know, how did you come up with the nineteen million dollar budget around fiscal, for the fiscal year to run the city off for the next to the next budget year?
You did not have this situation here of the FEMA reimbursement, the eighty-seven percent. This budget would be around eighteen five.
Okay.
Around eighteen five instead of nineteen eight.
Yeah, because that's what you had on that. I think you had like nineteen some.
That's right, it's nineteen, it's nineteen eight, that's correct.
Okay. That is why I wanted to ask you that, based on what I've been looking at on the figures on your, on what you have laid out. And I was trying to figure out how that we can, that it would end up to this point that we'll be able to be run off.
I have something to say about that. The funds that we're using for CARES Act and for FEMA are coming out of reserve accounts, correct?
Well, it depends on how you define reserve, Councilman. They're not, technically, they're not reserved. I know that's the term that's being used, which you're basically using are earmarked money. This is, these are funds that are coming directly out of the general account. They've simply been earmarked for those special projects.
So if we're, if we run this in our normal budget and and count this as revenues for the general fund and then have nineteen point eight million dollars in expenses, then we're no longer going to have that money in a in a an account set aside where we can use it, per se, for instance, another emergency comes up.
Well, what I have been trying to explain to the council, when you continue to spend that money for those emergency items, I was trying to share with you, but, you know, it was a council decision, that you weren't spending restricted money. You weren't doing that. What you were doing was spending money that had been earmarked from the general fund. You were spending the city's cash. You were spending, that's what you were spending. And the answer to that is correct. But the bottom line is with this particular reimbursement line item, this particular reimbursement line item, it's, you go back to that one point four million dollars that we will be spending out for that portion of the that we'll be paying out for the cleanup, we're paying that out for the cleanup. And then you compare that to this number, it's basically a wash. The difference is about twelve and a half percent that the, that the, that the city will actually be paying once you get your reimbursements back. Now, clearly, this number right here is dependent upon FEMA's timeline for reimbursing us. But the number here, that one point But the number here, that one point four million, that is going to be spent. And our goal is to try and get it reimbursed this year, that's why we went through all the trouble of making sure we got the paperwork correct.
Okay, thank you, and, and I just want to say, um, right quick to Councilman Horrible. Um, I, I wasn't really ready for budget hearings, I was hoping we could just plan out. When our budget hearings were, were coming up, because I'm, I'm not prepared, um, to, to go into, into depth. Uh, with each one of these departments, uh, right now.
Well, the department, departments are available to go into depth with the council, but I, and I would strongly encourage the council. To expedite this process, uh, you know, a lot of work into it. Uh, and the department heads are prepared to defend their sections of budget. Uh, and so as soon as the council is ready, uh, just know that we, uh, we stand by and we're ready to deal with this. I also mentioned, when I gave the council this, I asked that you would. Pay close attention to the general government section of this budget. The, the, the top portion, those first pages, if you would take a look at that, because they're not, we've made any changes here. This is what you currently have in your existing budget. If you, uh, uh, and, and it's the same, these are the same numbers, excuse me, with the exception of the audit. The audit cost, and the reason this number is, is almost double is because, um. We're going to end up paying for two audits this year. You know, you know, we, we are behind audits, and so we're trying to get two fiscal year audits done in one year. Eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty. And so we're expediting this process to get that done. So that we will be able to get our bond rating back up and stabilize our city. So it really is important that we go ahead and get this budget approved. The other section, this is a continuation of that general government section, and then behind that. You have the contractor section, this is, these are contracts that the city has traditionally entered into. Uh, you know, from the library to, uh, uh, youth activities, these are contracts that we. Actually enter into, and so, uh, the council needs to look at these and say, okay, you want to go back and do. Additional contracts on these or not, these are decisions that we need to make. Uh, and, and then following the contracts, then you have the mayor's budget, the council's budget, so forth and so.
Um, I, just a couple of comments, um, and I would like to take us back to. Um, why we're here today in January of twenty twenty-one. Uh, talking about our fiscal year, uh, budget that was done in October. Reason being was, uh, the, the budget that is adopted. Um, and in place, the, the original one, uh, excluded. A lot of personnel that was, that was let go and that, that we had to replace. So, you, you know, my plan is to have, you know, a, 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 a short series of meetings. Be it two or three, to, to, to rehash. What the mayor has proposed to us, again, we're, we're, we're not, we're not trying to approve a budget from scratch. For the next fiscal year, um, we're just trying to make some amendments to, to shore up where we are financially. So the process that we go through next year, I don't want this process and don't expect it to reflect that process. If you, you know, if you, if you look at the numbers, I mean, not a whole lot has changed, the biggest thing that we're dealing with is this FEMA. Um, issue, that, that kind of washes out all but, but twelve and a half percent. Um, you know, the last budget was a little messy, do we need to spend a little bit of time on it? Yes, I, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. But I, I don't think we need to forensically examine this budget like we would, you know, i- if we were trying to. You know, propose a, a new budget, rather, we're, you know, we're making some changes. So, but I, I would, I did, I did want to get some initial comments, you know, since everybody had, you know, since the mayor had gotten this out. Uh, if there were some obvious questions that, that we wanted to touch on. Um, then I wanted to, if, if there were any major issues that popped up, I wanted to make sure that we would be able to. Um, tackle them when, when we have these, when we break these down into, um, you know. Basically departments and, and, and do quite a few departments at one time, but nonetheless. Um, any other, any other questions or comments at this point?
Yes, I do have a question, the mayor.
Yes, yes, Council.
Yes, um, Mayor, what is the difference, um, I know you said that the one point four million. Um, is included, uh, from FEMA. Um, but what is the difference between the one point four million and the increase, um, that you included? And, um, what line items can we look for to find those different increases?
The. Again, hold on, just let me do that again, we'll walk back through that real quickly.
If we, if we take out the one point four million, what would be the difference in the, um? And the two amounts?
Um, it's going to end up being like eighteen million, eighteen million, eighteen million five hundred thousand. Eighteen million five eighty-one, something like that, when you take, when you take that number out, and keep in mind, again, I, I, um. Hold on a second, let me, let me just, let me walk back up here, and I, I don't mind, I don't mind the questions, let's. Let's hammer this out.
I just didn't follow you because I couldn't see which, which page.
I understand, I understand, hold on just a second, let me, uh, there we go, that's just where I'm trying to get back to. Want to get back down here, this, this section of the budget, it says grant match, okay? And these are the different grants that the city has either been awarded or we anticipate receiving. And these are the matching funds that we would need to actually receive that money, those grants and begin to execute. Once we begin, we're going to have to put some money up in the matching portion, and so what we're showing. Is the year these grants were awarded and the amount of the match, uh, that we have, the amount of the grant, the amount of the match, so that's what that is. And in this section, we have included what we will be paying out to FEMA. I mean, what we are paying out to the monitoring and the cleanup contractor. If you recall, we started out at about two million, that's what we were projecting. Uh, when I talked to the engineer last and I got, I said, give me a realistic number, where do you think we're going to land right now? Based on where we are, and the answer to that question was, is, we think we're going to land around one point four million dollars, that's not absolute. It could be one point six, I, I'm confident it won't be over two million, but we're saying right now one point four million. Now, when you take that number, so that means that's how much we are projecting to spend. But we're also projecting to receive eighty-seven and a half percent of that back, okay? And that's the portion that's showing up in revenue. When we show that, when you show that portion up in your revenue section, at here. Then basically what you're saying is that one point four minus this number is the actual amount that we would have spent. Uh, uh, to get the cleanup done. Uh, uh, the actual amount that we would have spent and not been reimbursed for, is that, I, I. I, I can try it again, Councilwoman, if that's.
Yeah, I understand that part of the grant, I, I was, I was, um, asking a question about. Um, the difference, and I know that we had, we had it at eighteen, what, what was it, seventeen point nine?
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
And we're asking to amend it nineteen point eight?
That's right.
Taking out the one point four million. I came up with the difference of seven hundred and something thousand.
Now, if, if you take out the one point, you take out the one point two two five, because that's what's reflected in revenue. If you take that out, I think you're going to be, yeah, I think, I think that, I think you'll be around eighteen million five eighty-one.
Okay, so with eighteen million five eighty-one, what are the other, um? Increases that were included into this budget to, to increase it to that?
Uh, on the revenue side, uh. Let's, let's walk through it here. If you look at, um, this column, okay? This is the council, this is the budget that you have actually passed and you have. When you look at this column, this is what we are proposing. And so when you look at this, you see here in the ad valorem tax section. We have increased that, this is what was proposed in the budget that you have. We have looked at those numbers in the tax and license office and concluded. That we would be closer to this number, which is the actual amount that was collected versus this number. And so we are sitting at one point one, uh, one point one oh one, where the actual collected last year was one point. One oh two, uh, if you, um. Uh, if you look here at this line item as an example, in the, in the tobacco tax. Uh, we did decrease this based on some factors, uh, of, of our, our, with the weakness. That we have shown in these first part, the first part of this fiscal year in collecting these monies. We're going to come back and we're saying, okay, but we're going to project this more than what was actually projected. In the budget that you have, and we are a few dollars more, that's where we are. So what you're looking at right here, as an example, uh, with the state of Alabama excise tax. There was nothing budgeted there at all, uh, but we did collect a hundred and nine, we expecting to collect more like we did. In nineteen, in the year eighteen nineteen, so we're budgeting a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, so you, if you go through here, you can actually see the differences.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
And I need to, uh, I need this to hear, it's attorney on, um, when you say. You're gonna, uh, move all earmarked money, that, uh, some of the earmarked money that the council voted on for different. Uh. Projects, uh, where we voted, uh, for this fund to be used. In order for you, you already did it and placed it in the budget, doesn't, uh? Where we have already had like, uh, uh, voted on and, and, and put in writing. For this earmarked money to be used for, don't, don't this have to go back to before the council? To, uh, make a decision that if we are going to allow. This earmarked money to be used for you to, uh, use this money for what we, we placed it for?
Can you be more specific, Councilwoman, what money are you referring to?
Okay, when you said that you were, uh, using earmark, you were going to use all the earmark money that we had. Uh, placed in the budget for like different, I, I use one as the example, okay, like. We earmarked money for the brown YMCA, okay? Are you using that earmarked money that's placed there in the budget, will you, did you pull that out?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm really trying to figure out where the, the earmark money that, that you're using to round up these numbers. To, uh, place for, to get that, uh, the figure for the one point some million for the, uh. The salaries.
Well, it, this, that, that is not actually what happened, uh, we didn't, we didn't take earmarked money to put salaries in. Those are two separate issues. Um, the, the term earmark came up when the question was asked about whether. Monies for, um, for the special projects that the council had set money aside for. Such as, and Zeta, uh, wasn't that in a restricted fund? And my response was, yes, it's technically restricted, but it's not restricted as in the case with grant funds. Or with bond funds, which you, those monies you can only use for a specific purpose. The monies that the council use for earmarking for disaster. That money that you, that you set aside came out of the general fund. And it was earmarked for a specific purpose, which means it's, that's different from a restricted fund. That's what I was saying, and, uh, and the consequence has been, when you have, when you have used that money. From the general fund as earmarked, what you were basically doing is you are spending from your general fund. You're not spending from a restricted fund that, that was set aside, you know, by some ordinance. You did that by, uh, by a vote of the council, and that's a, that's a big difference.
Essentially, what we're doing is, is depleting our savings, if you want to think about it that way.
That's exactly right, Councilman, and, 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 uh, and every time, uh, we did a. A stimulus package and we wrote another two hundred and fifty thousand dollar check to pay out those stimulus funds. That portion that didn't come from the CARES Act, CARES Act, which is restricted money. But that other portion came from the general fund, even though you had it earmarked, it came from the general fund.
And, and that was my point earlier, uh, Councilman Horrible. I, I like to put money back into my savings when I take it out, so that's, that's kind of my point, we just need to look after that. And, uh, and, and maybe, uh, shoot for a better, a, a little bit more of a surplus there at the end.
Yeah, the thing, the things like, you know, things like the FEMA disaster, you know, we've got to use savings for. I mean, if it's not a disaster, and I think what Councilman Cormichael was saying is, he doesn't necessarily want to spend it if we don't have to. Which I think we kind of all agree with, um, any other questions?
No, I just, your budget, I just want to know, uh. When we do a budget here and that, uh, all of the body of the council be, uh, be on the, uh, together to go through. To make the right decision on, 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 on this here, uh, for this amendment, this budget for twenty twenty-one.
When you say together, you mean in person?
No, when I say, when you made the statement, when you made the statement about, uh. About the budget, about the time, timeline on the budget. Uh, it takes, everybody has to be exactly to know, uh, exactly what we are doing with this budget and agreeing to. To be able to pass this, uh, for the city of Selmo. And, and like I said, there are questions that, uh, some questions that we don't have, we, we, this is not a budget here, like. We, uh, I don't know if the president, Billy Young is on, uh, uh. Present, but some things that, uh, you go through the budget, uh, that the mayor has laid out in each department. There might be some questions, and that's why I say it's, it's a timeframe that, that all of us should be able to. Discuss of anything that we want to discuss with the department head, which things are there, which they are requiring for, for the funds to be used for.
May I, may I?
I agree with you, I, I, my, my point was, we don't need to do it at our leisure, though. And I think that was the main, the, the mayor's, uh, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but yes, we, we have to be comfortable, but. You know, we, we got to get comfortable quick.
Yeah, let me, let me, may I speak to that, I, I, the department heads are on, on this, on this, in this Zoom room. And, um, I, I want to, I want to just, um, be clear and hopefully not to offend. But when I begin this process with the department heads, and I begin to ask them. Invite them in to sit down to have a conversation about their budgets. Every one of them brought me a budget dated back to twenty seventeen. Now, I, I want to, I, and I, I, I had always, I, I've always asked the department heads to keep your. Screens on when we're in these meetings. Uh, because I, I, I see Mosey nodding, I, I need to see more nods on this, because when they came to me. They brought budgets dated back to twenty seventeen, that's all they had. They had no idea how much money was in their budgets. They had no idea what was going on with their finances. I want the council to be more vigilant with this process.
Yes.
But I want us to be fair. But I want us to be fair also. This has not been, you've not had a budget, this council has not approved a legitimate budget in over five, nearly five years.
Four years I've been in there.
And yeah, and so, and so I just want, I don't mind.
I wasn't, I wasn't there in the past.
That's okay. I want, I want us to be vigilant, but I also want us to be fair.
Yes.
I want us to be fair about this. The department heads have put a lot of work into this. If you want to know how those raises were achieved, how we were able to increase pay for the persons or for the positions that are being proposed, I have them available, you can ask them. But what I don't want to do is I don't want to deal with this on, on Facebook. I don't want to be out here dealing with a whole bunch of negative comments and all this kind of stuff because it would not be fair to the people who really genuinely have put a lot of work in pulling together a budget that's doable for their departments. And all they're asking is a fair hearing and the council to give them a fair decision. That's all.
Mayor Perkins, I want to say, I don't think it's fair for you to say this council has not passed a budget in five years. Because six of us are new council members and we're, we're getting into this and, and you know, this is something that does take time. I mean, it's not like we can just look through 18 and a half million dollars and just, and just, and not talk to the people that are responsible and deliberate over each department, figure out what we can do to help. You know, I mean, that's, that's what we're looking to do. I mean, we, we all, we're all after the same thing here. I mean, we all, we all want to make sure Selma goes in the right direction. And I know you've been able to talk to them on a regular basis, but, but most of us have jobs and we haven't been able to talk to them and deliberate. So I think it's important for us to sit down with them and, and talk to them about each department. And, and you know, maybe we just, the conclusion is, hey, we're good with it. But, but we need to be comfortable with saying we're good with it.
That's right.
Councilman, I respect your comments, receive it. And maybe this was the wrong term, but when I spoke this, I meant this city government, city council. That's what I meant. I wasn't talking about the individuals on the council. I'm talking about the Selma city government, city council. And so I, I pray that you don't take what I said personal because I wasn't speaking to the six new members. I wasn't speaking to this council. I'm talking about Selma city's government, city council has not had a updated legitimate budget in four to five years.
Well, let's just say the city of Selma hasn't, and I agree.
City of Selma.
Because we're all in this together, right?
That's right, that's right. City of Selma, I'm fine with that. But I, just, just be clear, it was no hit to be personal, to be taken personal. But I am, I am saying, and I did say, Councilman Carmichael, that I have the department heads available, they want to defend their budgets. They want to have the conversation. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, you know, I've been on the council since 2012. And, and I told, agreed that each department head always got with the mayor to bring the things that they know that needed for our city of Selma. For the last few years, I've been so discouraged because I'm was one of the few that want to go along with the mayor to try to get the budget passed. The way we going now, it seem like we going like the past administration. If we don't go ahead and look at this and quit playing around with it, because this is some serious. The department head ready to move forward, get some of the things that they need to make our city available, and sound like you ready to get it going to as well, Mayor. I hope this council, let's go ahead and get this together, let's go ahead on our off time, not just for a meeting, to review this budget. The mayor gave it to us over a week ago, going on, I guess it's going on two weeks. We at council need to take time, go through this, this budget that was gave to us when Councilman Harville called a meeting. And I understood the mayor got each department heads on the phone. And I know we ain't gonna be able to do all this at, at one time. We need to go ahead on and let's not be like the past administration, playing around with this. Let's get this done. And once we get it done, we need to be able to allow the mayor and each department head go ahead on, if they need to get something that need to be done for their, their job site, like the recreation department, if they need something, they don't have to keep coming back to the council to get approved if it already in the budget. You know, because, you know, like I said again, I feel like we got some good department head. The mayor's on the right track. I appreciate Councilman Harville, how he taking charge of this. And so far, it seems like we doing a good job. But right now, let's not play around with this. Each council person needs to go ahead on and move forward. I'm listening to questions. If we sit down and look at the budget, the budget speak for itself. We don't have to keep asking questions, you know, it'll speak for itself. You know, so, but like I said again, every question is a good question, but I'm just saying like we just going around and circling with it. But yes, the past administration, like I said again, we kept on going back over and over again and answering, I mean, and, and just going and passing the same budget because we couldn't get together. I believe this council is, you know, we're not going to do that. So let's please, let's go on, let's work together, let's get with Council Harville and the mayor and all of us come together and, and I think we can sum this up less than a week. And, and let's move forward with this because right now it's a lot of work need to be done in our wallet. And while we playing around, not even saying playing around, please forgive me for saying that, but we keep going and move forward with this and let's try to go ahead and get these department heads, get this equipment. We need equipment bag, we need side cover, we need a lot of things to go ahead and move this together. So, but until we get this budget passed, we ain't gonna be getting it done. Thank you.
Mayor, I do, I do have a request. And, and I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm not looking at my notes right now. I'm pretty sure I asked for, in my items for expenses to date. And, and I think that, that will help a great deal in deliberating exactly which way we're, we've been going and, and where we're going in this, in this budget. Because I am used to looking at, you know, something that says what we've spent so far. And, and also I was, I was wondering, because the payroll, the payroll is so different. That, that document, I'm wondering if you can get us a copy because the last payroll for the old budget, you know, had names and things in there that, that weren't even there. But, but now this one's way up to date and, and not to mention everybody's gotten a raise. So I'm, I'm wondering if we can get a payroll document that is, that is accurate, you know, to that, what is today's payroll?
Good question. First off, the numbers that are in the budget are not the numbers that people are being paid. The numbers in our budget are proposed numbers. And that's one of the reasons that, that I have, that I've been pressing to, you know, I'm encouraging us to move quickly with this process. I'll just give you a couple of examples. In the public works department, he, what he has about 16 people out there, maybe. He needs 40, I think something like that. But he can't hire people at $7.25 an hour. They're not gonna, they're not coming on board. And so what we've done is we've made some adjustments in the number of slots that were in there to get the pay up to $9 an hour. But until the council passes the budget, he cannot start hiring. Every time he talks to someone, somebody said, no, I can't come to work for 7.25. So that's one example, and it's the same thing, the police chief, the fire chief. They are, they are, they are wrestling with training folks and then they leave. And so what they're trying to do is get their numbers up so that when their numbers up, they'll be able to hire people and retain them. They'll be able to bring people in from other departments. But we can't start that process until this budget's passed because we're still operating on those low numbers that were in the budget that you have, that you have. So that's, that's, that's the reason we're doing that. Now, in terms of your, and I don't know, Ms. Oliver's husband had surgery today. I'm not sure if she's on this call, but you should have received a budget to actual report at the last council meeting. Ms. Ellison, did they get that? The budget to actual report from the finance department? You should have gotten that, council members.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, if you, if you got the budget to actual report from the council meeting, the expenditures, the monies that have been spent in this fiscal year, there is a line item in that document that would share that with you, Councilman. If you're asking for a check register, that's something different, we can get you that. But this, but the actual expenditures, year to date, based on this fiscal year, you should have that.
Okay, I guess, I guess kind of also what I'm talking about here is, is the, the payroll, the things that we have, not just payroll, but other things that we have voted on since we got into office on this old budget. So technically that, that was an amended budget. You know, it was amended prior to receiving this new budget. And, and I'm, I'm kind of looking, I'm just trying to see, well, well, what has been approved already? Because, because that's already technically been adopted because we voted on it.
That's correct. And, and what you have with your unit date reports is what's in, was actually in the accounting system. That's what you're actually operating from. And this particular budget proposal is attached from that. So it is not attached to what you're actually operating from right now. And, you know, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm just, I'm used to looking at them side by side, you know, not, not a whole nother book that's, that is not as detailed. In some cases, one is more detailed than the other.
Are you talking about the payroll section and the?
Well, I'm, well, I'm talking about what you were talking about with the, with the performance report.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
But, but, you know, they're not, they don't match up, so to speak. And I mean, you really got to dig, you know? I'm used to looking at something, when I have a budget for, for a large, you know, a large budget in front of me, I'm able to look at each item as how, how it's been spent, you know, how much is, how much is on this exact budget? And, you know, so, but, but really, I mean, that's kind, that's kind of where we've gone with this now. But I was really originally just looking for the, you know, the payroll, an updated payroll for the, because that old budget is, is, the payroll in that is just way gone. You know, it's not, it's not, I don't know, you know, there's, like you said, there's people in there that aren't there. And.
But an updated payroll register can be produced, Councilman, we can produce that. Ms. Ruffitch, would you, let's see. He actually wants a payroll and an employee register. Let's, Don, let's make sure that we get that information request into the finance department, the payroll side, and let's get each member of the council a payroll register.
Thank you.
No problem, Councilman.
Just, just another, and I am, I'm as conservative as the day is long and I don't disagree with any, any comments that have been made today. I'm just trying to make sure, we understand. Let me, let me, let me use another very crude sports analogy. We're getting ready to play for the national championship game in football. Selma's team is still in the locker room and the official has already blown the whistle and the other team kicking off and we're still in, on the chalkboard trying to draw up plays while the game's going on. You know, this budget should have been done in fact, like for whatever reason, it was a sloppy budget. When we came into office, it was a sloppy budget. But we got to get to a point where we're diligent about getting this stuff done and approved because, you know, we're only going to be able to play three quarters of the game because the first quarter is going to be gone and we're probably going to be losing 60 to nothing. We gotta get in the game and that's the only, I'm not saying we need to be lazy or don't pay attention to details, we need to do that, but we just need to do it with a, with a sense of urgency. And my other point is, as you look through this budget, you know, if 90% of the things in a department has stayed the exact same thing as the old budget, at this point in the game, we don't need to rehash all that. If there's something that, that is different, yeah, we, we need to ask questions and, and be diligent about that. But we don't need to, you know, reform this whole budget while we're trying to do business. I would ask if it is the consensus of the council, you know, that we have budget hearings and would like the mayor to be a part of that and to allow access to the department heads. Is there consensus from the council to do that?
What's the question?
I would like for us as a, as a council to come to the consensus, yes, we do, we do need to, to meet and go through the, this budget, you know, breaking them up by department. And of course, you know, many departments can be done at one time. Is that the consensus? And, and of course, the mayor be involved in that, must have access to the, to the city department heads. Is that, is that what we're saying? Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I, I think that's what we need to do and make as often as possible in the next, in the coming weeks.
Councilman Harville, if you all put together the schedule, as long as there are no personal conflicts, we'll let you know, if you pass a proposed schedule to us, we'll make department heads available. It was my goal tonight, in fact, they will tell you that I told each of them to be online tonight to be prepared to defend their department's budget. I had no intentions of talking all night, I was looking forward. You're actually asking them some questions, so they're on standby and ready to go. So if you give us a schedule, we'll move forward. I see Mr. Williams, Moselle Williams, other landfill hand councilman.
How's everybody doing, council members? Glad you guys let me speak for a second. I just wanted to bring a point to a head that I've been with the city of Selma 12 years now and I've been running that landfill for about 12 years. And we all know the cost of stuff goes up year after year after year. And just keep in mind, if we've been running that same budget for all these years and with the cost of materials and supplies going up, when I used to make a service call, I used to run anywhere from around $1,200 to $1,400 to have somebody come out and work on a machine. It's almost triple that price now. It's up to maybe $3,200 just for a basic service call. And if I'm still running at the same budget I've been running there for the last four or five years and I'm making service calls the same way I've been making them, you can pretty much imagine, you know, where we're headed. And, and it's getting rougher and rougher every year when I have to have something fixed or I need some type of material for the landfill. Right now, our roads are terrible. The public works director can tell you, we had a conversation today about tearing up those, those, those trucks coming through the landfill. It's $45,000 to get those roads repaired. And, and if we don't get it repaired soon, we're going to end up tearing up more trucks and having more issues. And that's why it's very important that every second and every minute counts that we, that we're delivering. You know, and we need to really try to move as fast as we can to get a lot of this stuff done or it's going to end up causing problems, more problems later on down the line. And I'm not saying, you know, everybody doesn't need to look, everybody needs to be aware of what's going on. Everybody needs to be aware of the budget. But at the same time, we need to, we need to move, you know, in a swift pace because I'm getting, myself, I'm getting farther and farther behind, you know, at that landfill. because where I'm getting myself, I'm getting farther and farther behind, you know, at that landfill. And with us being in a situation we're in now, and we don't move fast, we're not gonna have a landfill. We're not, we're not gonna have a landfill. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, you know, I I mean, I'm a team player like everybody else, but sometimes you know, we have to stand up and we have to say, hey, let's let's get moving, you know, and then, you know, let's, you know, move forward. And I I hope I didn't offend anybody, and but that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any anything else? We have no other agenda items, any other comments?
Uh, should we, should we uh schedule now or try to schedule now or or uh do we want to do that Thursday?
Well, I think we need, I think we need to, what my thought and and I I do and I'll take any any comments uh would be greatly appreciated. I I think what we need to do, we need to identify each department and try to group them together in in some kind of logical sequence. In other words, we can do not, we can do department one, six, twelve, and eleven on one night, you know what I'm saying? Try to get them grouped together to see how many nights, you know, it's gonna actually take us um before we try to schedule meetings. And and I'm gonna have to get some help with that because I I just, I I don't know. Does that make sense?
Well, I I I agree with you on this, on on Councilman Harvey, and 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 I think that where the mayor need to come in it and get with his department head and see how many we can do on uh 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 whatever date that you schedule. Uh, so yeah, that's what we need to do, do so many per night. And Mayor, Mayor, you may want to let us know um what department you want to take first. And um and 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 that that's the one to be online, and that's gonna move forward with it and and we make you do three a night, three, four, four apartments a night, yeah, one night, you know, so yeah, I agree with you, Councilman Harvey, that'd be the way to do it. But I would, I would get with the mayor and see which one he wanted to do first, and let's go on and get it going, instead of the date.
I don't, we don't have a problem in putting together proposed schedule for you, uh, Councilman. Um, uh, I'll, I think it would be smart to to get uh Don and Nikki, I don't mind me using your first names to work together, and y'all can, y'all can bail us out on this issue. I think y'all, they can bail us out on this issue because it's gonna require scheduling the council members' time as well as the department head's time. And so uh in order to make sure we get that balance right, I think those two folks are smart enough to help us get that done. Uh, give us a date. I think tomorrow, they can get together, we can come up with a reasonable schedule.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you.
If you don't mind, please, Mayor and Councilman.
Is that a question?
Yes, this is Ellison. I want to join in uh with the council, being that everyone is um really strained here. Are you all opposed to meeting with um on weekends? Hammering through some of this budget on weekends, like on Saturdays or, I mean, that's if you're not, you know, impeding in anybody's schedule.
I I don't, I I don't, I don't mind devoting a a Saturday morning.
Okay, okay. Um, you can let Mayor, me and Don will get together and um I'll pull my schedule from the last council and we'll start working on it tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, man. Anything else? All right, this committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it very much.